I'm moving through the man's. Second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve last month, or last meeting's minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Alright, uh... Bills to be paid.
Franny was here today, I know. Um, I don't know if he's got anything, uh, that he wants to talk about specifically. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk to him about.
I think we should move that down until Francis gets here.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We'll move that into old business. Uh... Because it's still alright, because it's still gonna be on the agenda, we're just gonna move it.
Yep, we'll just move it.
That's fine. Uh, well, water waste generator, or waste water and generator, Chris.
Um, you guys will have to look back, and there you go, right, right there it says, "Well, we have a rehabilitation outline." Um, one reason I really got this on here is because I wanted to update you guys on what I found out. First of all, on the, on the grant application. Um, I've got a few notes on there. We've got till December 31st of 2012 to get the project done. But the guy told me, I talked to Dan Narber. He's the guy that, uh, he's running the grant for us. He said that he would work with us if we need more time, you know, if we call him and tell him that we don't have enough time to get it done, they would work with us.
On the new well, you mean?
This is, this is for the...
Three hundred dollar grant we got.
Yeah.
CDGB.
BG.
Or BG.
New well.
Yeah, it doesn't, whatever. Uh, and then he said, uh, I asked him about changing what we applied for, and he said, basically, he told me that he didn't know. I mean, he told me a lot more than that, but at the end, that's what he told me, he didn't know what would happen. He did tell me that if we changed the scope of the work from a new well to a new sewer system, then that would definitely change it, and we would have to reapply. Now, if we want to take some things off, or add some things, do some, you know, stuff like that to make it less cost, then that may not change it that much. So basically, what we need to do is, we need to wait for the application to get here, we need to sign the application, tell them what we want to do, and see what they're gonna, you know, see what they're gonna give us.
See what adjustments we're gonna make.
Yeah, they're gonna make some kind of adjustment, we just don't know, he didn't know, he couldn't tell me exactly what it would be.
What about the page you have, and has that been sent in?
It has been, Steve signed that, and it's been sent in already.
On the rehab, he's not gonna be here till December?
2012.
We have till 2012 to complete the new well system.
Only through next year. The application that we turned in.
Yeah, I'm talking about this rehabilitation thing.
Oh, no.
He's still talking about the grant.
No, I was just talking about the grant. That's, that has an eighteen...
That has a lot to do with our grant, it's how this turns out.
Yeah. It has an eighteen-month window, the grant. I should've probably started with this, Darrell, you're right, but what this guy told me was that he could do it basically any time. Um, and I told him that we wanted it started in September, so he said, "Call me three weeks ahead of time." So you guys tell me when you want it done, September, middle, first, last?
I think the sooner the better, that would make...
Sooner, yeah. Sooner the better, the problem is the water consumption.
Right.
You know, we've...
Until winter.
Yeah, we have to wait till we don't consume a tank worth of water today.
But the sooner we can find out, that's, sooner we can find out how we want to proceed on our CDVG, or whatever grant.
Maybe they won't be working twice the other night.
Well, I would think September should be okay. We should be shut down pretty much on water, shouldn't we? Unless we're hot.
Well, pools closes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you should shoot for like, second week in September.
Second week.
That's what I would think.
That sounds good, Rob.
Second week in September.
That sounds good.
Plus, it's just hotter than Billy Hill, I don't know, it shouldn't be alright.
Yeah.
Cool as hell, it's like you done sprained it.
Sounds to me like they'll be here at six o'clock in the morning, and it'll take them most of the day to do it, till about six o'clock that night.
But at least we can get a determination. I would also...
The waste on that, what are they talking about?
Um, he told me that when he did this, when he did this bid for John, he was just, you know, this, he didn't really come up here and look at it. He just did it over the phone, kind of a, uh, guessing.
Who's, who's the... He saw the film, though.
He did see the film, but he...
Who's the well driller that said it wouldn't work? John says, he said he didn't see the hole there.
Who's the well driller that said it wouldn't work? Sergeant Drilling?
Sergeant Drilling was the one that said it wouldn't work.
Yeah, I couldn't remember who it was, right. But, my question to you, Chris, is, will these people, um, photograph the well to see the upgrades then, after they're done?
You mean, uh, we've got a before, we've got a before picture, they clean it, and then will they go in there and...
After picture.
I don't know that.
I don't know that that's necessary, if we get the proper amount of gallons coming out of there.
Yeah, what he told me they do is, and, forgive me, guys.
He probably's gonna scope it while he's doing it anyway, just to see what's there, won't he?
Well, that was my question.
Well, I don't think so.
Or probably the hole is in there, or something like that, or sand running out, or...
Well, that's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah, you know, is it gonna last for two months?
Is this gonna last for six months? Right, exactly right. How long is this gonna last? How long is a patch, kind of patch?
See, I don't think he knows exactly that, because...
No.
Because he hasn't been up here to look at it, you know, yeah, he's only seen one film.
I think we've been pumping sand out of that for a while already. As far as, you know there's a hole, now.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this is, uh, this will just give us some leeway on the well project.
Buy it some time.
Yeah, we're spending eight thousand dollars just to, so that we don't have to dig the well in the next thirty days, or whatever, you know, something like that.
I agree with Rob. Do, do you need a motion?
No.
You just go ahead and you can contact them.
Information, I've already contacted the guy, I told him I was gonna get back in touch with him, I mean, you guys voted on this last meeting, so...
Yeah, I didn't want to.
Uh, the only thing, the only thing that I do want to tell you is, that it may not be seventy-seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Could be higher, could be lower.
Well, it's probably not gonna be lower.
Never be lower.
Uh, but the guy did say that he was, he may have some water that he has to get rid of, he said that it, we, we can't just take it and run it right into the, uh, storm drain.
Okay.
So, and he didn't have any, he didn't tell me what that would cost.
But it was gonna be minimal, I mean, I'm not...
How much water is this?
How much water is it?
That's the chemical, I suppose he pumps out, or what?
Yeah, I mean, they put the chemical in there, it's gotta sit for eight hours, six, eight hours, he said.
Two hundred fifty gallons of solution, I think so.
What they do is, they go in there and they, they blast it, and then they pump to see how things work.
But it's just a matter of how much water they're gonna pump out, they're gonna have to recover it. I mean, if it's five thousand gallons, that's a hell of a cost, to get rid of waste, five thousand gallons.
I don't think he'll know that until he gets into it.
But you can't pump it into the creek, if it turns, the creek a different color.
Right, it's all clear, we've done a lot of things that before with...
Heart kills fish.
You know, the drag line and all that, we use a dump, gallons, gallons of acid in.
Yeah, when we use acid at home.
The same thing as what he's doing.
Okay.
So that's about it on that, um...
Any questions?
Second week, second week in September, and...
Yep.
I'll, I'll find out what it's, what he thinks it's gonna cost to get rid of the water.
Once we get the paperwork on this grant, and can we go ahead and actually, and possibly order like, a generator and things? We should have a...
Well, we're gonna have to make our modifications to it.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out what we...
What we wanna make for modifications, 'cause if we wanna cut back, and we, we don't wanna do the, the, uh, uh, water readings, 'cause we've already done that.
Yeah.
So we've got, we've got to modify what we wanna do, then we should be able to set forward.
I would think that'd be one of the things we'd wanna look at.
It's the control unit inside the pump house is where it really needs to be updated.
Seventeen ten.
Which will have to be looked into, the generator. If they want it all automated.
Mm-hmm. Or partially, partially automated.
Yeah, there's no reason we can start having a generator either. I mean, when we know electricity is out, you know you gotta start generators, it's a pretty simple deal.
Okay, any other questions for Chris on that? Council? If not, we're gonna move on to the pool boiler, which I was down there, and, uh...
It's hooked up and working.
Now, has anybody been down to the pool? I was down there, I did. I go down there with my granddaughter Saturday. So, uh, I went through... Have you been down there, Chris?
I was down there, uh, a couple weeks ago, week ago.
The pool boiler, we have, I believe, in my all sincerity, is smaller than the hot water heater I have in my house.
Now?
Yeah.
The one we have now?
Yeah.
I heard it's small.
And it's working, it's working fantastic.
I heard it works damn good, though, too.
It's working great. And you can't believe how everybody's so proud and happy to come to our pool, so...
I'll be honest with you guys, this was a mix-up, this wasn't supposed to be on here, but since it was on there, I just tell you that it was in and working good. So we'll move on to electric transformer, Mark got the, uh, the prices that you guys wanted them to get, and he can kinda talk through that a little bit, you guys can ask him questions, uh...
Mark?
Okay, you probably saw that was forty-two thousand one fifty-nine for that power transformer and sub. Um, they recommended having another test next month, but I'd feel more comfortable if we had another test, to see where that hydrogen level's going, so we can know how soon we have to have something like this done, 'cause it takes three to four months delivery on it.
Which, which one we having trouble with now, Mark?
The one them big ones in the substation.
Right, well, which one? I know which...
The center one.
Again?
No, it was the east one.
No, it was the far east one. It was the far east one.
Now it's the center one, it has high hydrogen.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know that much about them, but I'm going on what TNR says on high hydrogen, and starting to have breakdowns inside the transformers.
We need to test them, let's go ahead and test them, I mean, it's...
I think I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if I had TNR come down, do it a couple weeks and test it. They just tested it like, a month ago, but with this, all this heat and load on the transformer, I'd kinda like to see where that hydrogen is going at the same level, or if it's raising. If it's raising, then I think we really need to look at this real close.
Could that be because of the heat that we've been having, the high humidity?
No, usually hydrogen is because of the breakdown of paper insulation, is what they're telling me on that.
Like the last one?
Yeah. But, and you know, I don't wanna... How can I say that?
Jump the gun?
I don't wanna jump the gun and spend forty-two thousand if we don't have to, but if we have to, then we need to spend it, you know, and I'm kinda saying.
Well, the issue is, is if it goes down tomorrow...
We're screwed.
It's three to four months.
You know, we're better off being ahead of ourselves, and...
Right.
See behind us again.
And if we have the thing set in there, you know, we may have to build another little cement pad for it to stay on, so we get clearance, it's gonna be sixty-nine thousand, like we did the other three. And if we go ahead with this, I can get a footprint in the height, so we know how high to build that, uh, cement base. And then if we have a transformer go bad, we just switch the wires over from the bad transformer to our backup, and just switch it right over in itself, we might already be down three hours instead of...
Four at the most, yeah.
I mean, it's something we can do, anyway, regardless of where that's going.
Yeah.
'Cause you don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
You know, and like that fifteen KVA pad, I don't know that we really need to do that at this point. 'Cause it's brand-new transformer.
What would be the lead time of getting that?
Three to four months for that sixteen sixty-seven.
No, but for the fifteen KVA?
I think, uh, I could go them off and look, but I think it's four or five weeks.
I was gonna say three, I thought you told me, but it could be three or four weeks.
Hold on a minute, I got it in there, in the locker.
Sorry, I'm late.
We'll let it slide this time, okay?
Yeah, you'd think stuff like that they'd have on hand, and that's supposed to be special building.
Well, there's not a lot of them out there.
Absolutely.
Not many people use that stuff.
It sits on the outside, it converts it.
Yeah, and then does twenty...
Yeah, maybe you'd use that.
Yeah.
Three to four to five weeks.
That's what I thought.
For that fifteen...
I thought you told me three, three, three to five weeks.
Well, I could get what they said on that, the sixteen sixty-seven, and I'll grab that quick.
Three to five.
Three to five, four months, you've got that down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I already think, regardless, we should get the sixteen sixty-seven.
So if we weren't here now, we're in September, October, November before it gets here. November first to November thirty.
Lot can happen between then and now.
Well, I, you know, I, I just think that that's not gonna be the time to be putting something like that in, too. But we should be able to get the concrete for it.
Yeah.
Would you pour that south of what's there already?
Yeah, 'cause, see, there's concrete there to the east of that tree bank, and even we poured that there because we just agreed to sell it, we were gonna get it after transformer. Back in ninety-four, never ever did.
So can we use that pad for this one?
Yeah, we'll put it right beside that, the bank of three. Okay, here is the report that TNR elected to give me, it said, "The increased hydrogen along with continued increases in CO and CO2 suggests that this unit appears to have a definite cell, paper insulation deterioration. You should have a backup plan in place. Consider taking this unit out of service for further evaluation. Partial discharge of low CO2 CO ratio may indicate cellular distribution, lack of discharge, extreme exercise, extreme caution."
Wasn't it sixteen thousand costs to rebuild it out of them? Isn't that the other part, right?
Something like that.
Yeah, I think it was, right about that.
But we can get this in three weeks, in case that one does go down.
No, no, three months.
Thirteen, fourteen months. We can get in three weeks. This, that sixteen sixty-seven, I think, is, uh, three to four months. To have it rebuilt and backed along, of course.
So what exactly is testing it again gonna do? This guy says it's...
Well, see, what's testing it again is gonna see if the hydrogen is staying level, or if it's raising, and there's continuing issues. It'd give us some time to, okay, should we do this, or should we wait, or should, and if it's continuing up, that we got an issue, that we have to take action on it.
Sounds like we need to take action on it anyway.
Yeah, that's exactly what I think.
How much is the test?
I don't know, probably a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, but I'm like, Rob, what, I think we need to take action now.
I would recommend that we do it.
Can't be the general consensus here, you know?
Is this the part west one?
So does the test do us any good, or should we, is it going to give us information that we badly need? I mean, that's the question I'm asking, because, you know, it's great to come down and test it, but it'll say anything we don't already know, or, you know, it's not gonna be able to speed up the process, or it's not going to be able to...
I think you're right, Rob, I don't think it's gonna speed up the process, I think it's something that we need to do.
Because...
We need to have a backup.
I know, but, you know, I, if we do the test, though, this is gonna do us anything, yeah, of course, other than we're gonna...
Know that it's getting worse.
Spread the panic. But, you know, I, if you need that for your information, that's, then say so. You'd feel more comfortable with it.
I think I'd feel more comfortable to see what that transformer is doing.
It was only a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, I don't think it's...
Huh?
Maybe we can rush this along more, it is deteriorating more.
We would know how...
I don't know if you can rush that much.
Yeah, I know.
I don't, but at least we can tell them we're in, we're in trouble. It's not like we're, we would sure appreciate any...
I, and I could see what it was before, but hydrogen was twelve hundred and forty-two parts per million.
Oh, my god.
It's contaminated.
I mean, I understand, those must be...
And limited, it'd be low a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty parts per million, that's twelve hundred and forty-two parts per million.
So it's ten, nice. Okay, no, I think... Those numbers are relatively small, some things.
I agree with you, I think we hold off on the street base, that's brand-new transformer, and...
Really, there shouldn't be any problem with it, but...
Shouldn't, but when we had that problem with CPS out there and dumping the, you know, it wasn't wired right, and, yeah, you know, the problem we had with Sam and all that. And it tripped the regulator, and the substation transformers are really sounding weird, maybe that started this.
Could very well be right, Mark.
Because I can't believe that ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four transformer, we should be having problems like we are with them now. There's transformers online that's...
Our demand hasn't went down, it's went up, so...
Yeah.
Well, if you got any more questions, I'd entertain a motion, uh...
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and purchase this sixteen sixty-seven, see if we can get a little bit more of a speedy delivery on it than what they've got scheduled for.
Second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the sixteen sixty-seven KVA sub-power transformer into our, uh, substation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Mark, do they know if anybody even has these, uh, fifty hundred KVA?
No. Oh, the fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you gotta ask Mark, I don't know.
When we had the problem before with that east transformer, we had that guy here from Mead, or...
Bob, uh...
Bob Mead.
Mead.
And he was called all over the country.
Kansas, Nebraska, oh...
Mead for the fifteen hundred is what I'm talking about.
Oh, no, we never talked about that, we talked about that sixteen...
Just call us company, say, "Hey, is there other people that have this out here, you know, if we got in a buy-in, we needed one right away, that we could, we could..."
See if we can...
"...get theirs and replace theirs."
What Franny's looking for is sooner delivery.
Yeah, I mean, just, just in case we get to buying, and somebody actually has one that has bought one, that we can buy from them, or whatever.
I'll put that out, and I'll call, uh, a lion.
Yeah.
Call Bob Mead, Lion Energy, they may have something online, or they may have what they call portable sub, that they can move in and take care of that fifteen hundred, going from twenty-four hundred to it all the time.
That'd be something, that'd be great, to, at least to give us some leeway if there's actually gonna be taken again.
Okay, how do you wanna, how do you wanna proceed on the fifteen hundred KVA pad model?
I think right now, you just need more information on it.
Yeah, let's see, if there's anybody out there that's actually got anything that can, we can move through, and, or else...
I'll get some information, availability, and, and, we can call different, you know, maybe Met American might have one.
Put that on the agenda for next meeting, Chris, please. Okay, we'll move on. Street costs?
Wait a minute, let's go back to bills now that Franny's here.
Oh, okay, yep. Be right back.
We didn't really talk too much about bills, Franny.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask you on the, uh, CPS planning. Um, I put that towards, uh, general roads, uh, in the roads fund, I didn't really know what else to do with it.
Yeah, that prob, I mean, that's what it's gonna end up being.
Well, that's, I mean, it's gonna be an addition sooner or later, so, uh, I just wanted to ask you if you were alright with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Uh... And then I don't think there's anything else on there that I wanted to really discuss.
I'm gonna review this, Ken's kind of thing.
Uh, you know, that's on the agenda.
Later on.
Later on.
That's part of those bills.
Yeah, you know, we probably should talk about that right now, because it's on bills to be paid. Uh, I guess, what I should ask first is, um, like, back in, um, January, February, I think it was, there was a couple of things that needed to be done, that, uh, Ken couldn't do. Um, so we got Roto-Rooter to do it, and we got Howe to do... We got Howe, Howe came down and, uh, charged us a thousand and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, and, uh, Roto-Rooter came in and charged us a hundred and fifty dollars. And I guess it was suggested that we take this off of his, uh...
Contract.
Contract. I don't know where you guys left that.
Well, when he did this contract, that's, you better be able to do what we need done.
And obviously, that came up.
That's what I was afraid of during this whole thing, that he wouldn't be able to perform the services that we really needed. And I don't know how to do this camera system, but Kenny O'Reilly versus what Howe can do. One thing about Howe, when he does it, he can carry it, and if there's something wrong, he can fix it.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta dig it up to fix it, he can do it through the pipes.
Thanks, Mark.
We're doing that.
But he is...
This is, this is, this is part of the bill, so...
Can he get balance, a hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents?
Yeah, he went over, he went over, uh, his six thousand dollar contract by a hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents.
Doing what?
He's got all kinds of invoices in there.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen...
Don't know what he did.
Eighteen, eighteen invoices. Since last... You're telling me you never signed to anything, Mark, or what?
No, I'm saying, I'm not sure what he did on the date, because I haven't seen it in there, so I don't know what.
So Rick Hoppy would be a better person to ask, yeah?
Rick Hoppy needs to verify it.
Right, Rick could be better on verifying than, than me, because I wasn't around, I was doing other things when, when he was in there doing that thing. And he was doing some stuff, but I wasn't there, so I don't...
I'm glad we're using him, if that's...
Yeah, be interesting to see what he did on six eleven of this, this year, because he, that was a twelve hundred dollar... Do you, that was just to push him over, or...
I know, I know one time on there, he didn't bill us for it, I don't think, but he billed,
What did he turn it on?
Steve Mack, for coming in and cleaning out, and then that's when we had to call Roto-Rooter, because he didn't get it done.
He couldn't go that far enough.
He couldn't go far enough, I think, yeah.
I remember that now.
So, you know, really, I mean, he's got a contract, it's been signed.
Yeah.
It's a five-year contract. It's a five-year contract.
But the agreement was it would be null and void if he couldn't perform the services that need to be done.
Well, okay.
But that wasn't in the contract, or was it?
True.
Look, apparently he is doing services for us, so just what we need is a better system of, other than services that are being done.
We need more of a daily account, I think, than a yearly.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you get a, yeah, I mean, that should be, you know, ours is, that's our responsibility.
More detailed, what he's doing.
Exactly what that... We're the people that are asking him to come, so, you know, Rick Hoppy should have written out what, what it is that he did do for that. If Rick's the one working with him.
I'd really like those receivals every time he does a project and describe what he did.
Yeah.
And then put them in a file. And then at the end of the year, when he submits his bill, match it up and...
Why can't, why can't he submit every time he does a...
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to see.
And all you have to do is fill it up and at the end of the year, when he...
Right.
All you gotta do is throw it up.
You match it up with what he presented you for a bill and...
And then I think it would be easier for us, for Rick and I, or Rick and Mark and I, or whoever's doing it, to sit down and say, yeah, did he do this?
Yeah, if the guy's problem is we need to look at, which was, you know, we do.
And if it's a continuing problem, if he has to do it again the next year or the next year.
Yeah.
So everything else all right, except for that one, Franny?
Yeah.
How do we...
I guess one of the things I would say on Sherri Beckman, we should probably commend her because, you know, she turned into, she said she'd do those signs for a hundred and fifty bucks and...
That's cheap.
When I went and figured out the hours she put in there and everything, she only got five dollars an hour doing it, so...
Yeah, she's, you know, she's a good gal.
She's done a great job there for us, so, you know, maybe we see her to still our thank you and...
Outstanding job. You know what that cost me out of my garage? She painted that out of my garage.
Really?
Yeah.
So, that would be something I'd say to her.
Hundred and sixty-nine?
[laughing].
Cost me out.
So what are we gonna do with the Howe thing? We just pay that above and beyond what he did, or...
I, I think so, you know, I, I mean, granted, there's things that you call people in and they can't do it, you know, and it doesn't matter. He's not God, you know, he, he couldn't get mine undone and then he got, uh, we got Roto-Rooter here, they couldn't get it undone, but they billed me anyway. And then we got Gus Cleveland there and he dug it up and we finally got to the source, you know, and it ended up being, because the city routed my toilet from way back there all the way across the building and into the old sewer and back right to the one that it just should have gone down the alley anyway. So whose fault is it in one?
Responsibility is domain. Remember, we don't know who routed all this crap.
Remember that part? You just didn't wanna dig up the alley, you'd go the right way. So I got to run, I got to run three hundred and fifty, seventy-five feet around to get eighty feet of...
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have no building codes, do we? And Ken is actually the one that got one. He ran his jetter down there then and got it and put it clean out there and now I'm just gonna have him come run the jetter once a year, I'm gonna have him do that because...
You have to, with the grease, you're dealing with.
And I think that, you know, that's the case down there at the ALOF. There are some places where you're not gonna, you know, our aging system is not gonna allow that to run.
Here what, you get that grease in there, it's gonna build up. Move your furthest bill.
Some of, yeah, some of that was so, I know Twilight neighbors had their problem too and it was what they was running through the garbage disposal.
Yeah, sure.
So whether we fix that or change that a little bit too.
Been moved to approve the bills to be paid as posted.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bills to be paid as posted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Approved. All right, uh, street costs, Chris?
Uh, I had Mark Fryer come over, uh, last Wednesday and we drove around, looked at some of the streets and what he suggested doing, um, and I remember he's a co- concrete guy, so he suggested tearing the street out and putting new concrete in. Uh, he's basically rough, estimated five thousand square feet, I think it is, I put yards down, that's not right, it's square feet, at forty dollars a square foot. Uh, and that's pretty rough costs. He said, he suggested if we're gonna do anything, we need to get an engineer, uh, that'll get the cost a little bit...
So the five thousand might be the poundy for the, pound of the, uh, concrete, five thousand pound concrete, that might be what that is.
No, no, it was five thousand square.
Okay.
I'm sure he said feet.
That's not very much.
No, that's what I'm thinking too.
I thought it was concrete. I bet it's five thousand square yards.
I don't know.
Well, that could be a...
Forty dollars a square yard, that's pretty cheap.
Forty yard, yeah, that's a hundred, a hundred dollars a square yard.
Concrete's eighty bucks.
He told me it would, he told me it would cost twenty-seven dollars for the concrete and about eight dollars for, like, moving your sewer intakes and your manholes and, and that kinda stuff, so, uh, I said, okay, forty dollars a yard would cover it then. But I thought it was a square foot. I better check on that.
A square foot.
That'd be fifty by a hundred, that's a square foot.
Forty dollars a square foot.
You're not, you're not gonna do much, fifty by a hundred feet.
Forty dollars a square foot makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty dollars a square foot, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense too, it's forty times by a thousand, it would be a twenty thousand.
Yeah, but, you know...
It'd be doing square foot.
I thought a square foot.
Square yards. So this is, that's forty dollars a square yard.
Couple houses.
But that can hardly be right, can it, Franny?
Well...
You can't even buy it for that.
But that means, that square yards...
Well, you gotta remember a square yard...
Well, you're talking about cubic yards when you're talking about...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're talking about square yards, you're talking about yards.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, yeah. I talk about, I probably, square yards probably more than...
Cause these cubic yards...
Five thousand square yard surface area, maybe is what he's talking about.
Let's, let's, uh...
Still not much.
Well, two hundred thousand dollars was what he told me.
Oh, yards square.
So...
What do we got on our road?
A hundred yards. That'd be fifteen thousand...
Fifty.
Feet.
What's typical block?
Almost a four thousand square yard.
How wide is the street?
How many yards is the street?
Well, it's five hundred, five, six hundred and some feet by, uh, fifty-seven feet wide.
One thirty yards by...
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
Three hundred and, thirty-four thousand square feet on block.
Fourteen by nine comes out to four thousand. Nine square yards in a square foot, or nine square feet in a square yard, so...
So then, when you add the other two to it, it would be about five thousand. He didn't measure anything or anything, he just looked at it.
As we get Daryl Street down, it's kinda...
I don't really care, I got big enough vehicles, I can go over it.
It'd be about sixty, everybody else would worry about it.
You know, I guess like, should be four, biggest concern is, biggest concern is sewers and everything else underneath it, if we need to be doing...
Well, and that's exactly what he said too, Franny, is...
That's true, there is.
If you, uh, if, if you tear up the street now, because they're not just gonna take the street up and put it back in there, he said they're gonna go down two feet. They're gonna take everything out of there, put a good base in. He said if you're gonna do that, you just well do mains and sewers if you're gonna do it.
I would say that might be part of our main rehabilitation, that area, cause there's only two inch line going through there.
Then he did...
Yeah, yeah, because that's up by Little Grody. That's right, that's a two inch line.
Second street, third street, fourth street are listed on there.
I don't know if the second street or second avenue.
That'd be second street. Avenue would be this one up here.
That's one of them that we were gonna have done, second avenue.
So if you're gonna do that, and there's no reason our guys can't do that. We did it for, I did it for. We did that one going past, and that's the one down, second avenue.
Like, had that old stuff out.
Yeah, we just...
But it's like, I think, the street is about six hundred feet long, running bottom to it.
Anyway, what he told me then was, if you're gonna have asphalt done, make sure you mill it down.
Yeah.
And get a good starting point before you do that. And then we did have this asphalt guy that you can see here, Black Top Services, he came in last Friday and, uh, talked to Rick. I wasn't here. And he hasn't gotten back to us yet on asphalt and he's the Red Rock guy that, Daryl, I don't know if you brought it up from Ito Grove or some, somebody, the Seal Coat, Rob?
John did.
Oh, John.
Well, if you ever go down that, oh, just head west of town, just keep going, goes to the Auburn Highway, they did Red Rock Seal Coat on that, that really looks good. It's been done four years or anything.
In Ia County.
Yeah.
West, West of Wally here?
Yeah, D forty-nine.
Just go on to, you get to the Auburn Highway.
D forty-nine.
Arthur, Arthur.
Arthur, I'm sorry, Arthur Highway.
Okay.
This way is all red rock and in Ito Grove County.
First like six miles or something.
Yeah, it looks good, yeah. I mean, I don't know what difference is, but...
Big thing is just having a good base on it.
I think it's harder to run.
Yeah.
A limestone isn't that hard.
Well, we should have that, we should have that cost for you at the next meeting and then I'll figure out what Mark was actually talking about.
Okay, we'll table that then. Right now, clerk's report.
Uh, at the last meeting, John was talking about, um, if you guys look on the, ooh, not the third page, look on the, uh, about the sixth page it is, it says page number four at the top. You look, general fund, ending balance. Last time we were here, it was fifty, oh, I suppose fifty-two thousand negative. Um, we put some, we put some donation money in there, uh, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars about. So that got that to twenty-eight now. John suggested that we do a little bit of interest, or not interest, uh, insurance moving, so we get this number even further down. Um, and, I mean, we could even get it to the positive if, if we really wanted to. Um, that was the main thing that I wanted to show you guys. Uh, I don't know if you guys have any other questions, but I think, um, I would feel more comfortable approving this when John is here.
I, I was looking at some numbers from here. Uh, we have electric and natural gas, you get ending balance of eighty-four thousand on the sheet here as of six thirty.
Natural gas.
And over there, you're showing twenty-four thousand on page two.
Yeah, those are, those are all the, the same. Uh, they're, uh, not the same, they're all that way, Ray, and I don't know.
Beginning, beginning balance is twenty-four...
Six thirty.
Six thirty-two, and then that's what you're showing here is the balance here for, as of six thirty.
Electric funds the same way, and I don't know...
Balance, that's why I said...
I don't know exactly why that is.
I, I, I was trying to follow those numbers, I was, I couldn't follow them.
And, and I'm gonna ask John that, uh, when he gets back.
But that was the natural gas and I think the electric is the same way, I'm trying to figure that out.
They're, yeah, they're all that way.
They're all that way.
Yeah, cause I looked at that too, I, I didn't...
I didn't, uh...
I don't know if I ran the report wrong or what.
Well, hopefully John can go straight on that. You got anything else on the clerk's report, other than this?
Unless these guys have any questions, no. Uh, well, actually, you should look at the natural gas fund, Rob, I don't know if you looked at that or not, but...
Yeah.
That one's getting even better yet.
And then we gotta pay sixty-five thousand dollars, just some things, not...
Yeah. We, we, uh, sent a bill for seventy-seven thousand, so...
Any questions?
See, that was what I looked across the top here and I see this here, uh, sale of natural gas, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for this period and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand for those revenues.
Those are the budgets.
Okay, budget and the revenue, okay, we took this in.
This, and the reason why that's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand...
Budget for a million and a half.
That's all WIE though, remember, they didn't, they didn't run for...
Well, I think our garbage is going down.
About three quarters of the year.
We didn't lose as much...
Yeah, I didn't think so either.
That's why I saw a little bit, that's why I didn't look at it.
Paying up some, you know, right, but...
Any questions for Chris, or any discussion?
How's that working? Somebody else picking it up. Took our little down quite a bit, looks like.
I think it's changed our garbage prices a lot.
Well, yeah.
Oh, you can see that, and not just them, but everybody.
Isn't the city still paying for twenty-one hundred?
We have to pay, um...
We did, we pay for our twenty, we pay quarterly.
That's per capita.
Quarterly, yeah, that's per capita.
Yeah, but don't we pay for what, uh...
No.
What they're picking up, taking out there?
Nope. They can't, they can't separately weigh that. When they, when they take it out, do they, if Rutt's doing it, then Rutt's the one that's gonna pick it up and tip it.
Okay, I, I was under the pressure.
Gail fee or whatever, call that.
Somebody told me that, that he's still paid for it, that's why I didn't know.
I don't know.
Thirty-five bucks a ton or something, whatever it is.
Thirty-six, I think it is.
No, it went, yeah, it went, yeah, it's up to new, new fee.
See, neither one's gonna make work.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's different. I was told that they, that they still had to, said they still had to pay.
No, 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 no.
Not funny.
Nope.
The typical fees, yeah.
Quarterly.
But that doesn't change regardless of whether you pick them up or not.
Natural gas. Uh, you guys asked me the question last time we were here, uh, if we hook these farmers up on natural gas, is it gonna change our demand cost? It will not. Um, they'll be hooked up on what's called a interruptible service. So if we need the gas here in town, those guys will be shut off, or we'll just, we won't shut them off, we'll ask them not to dry that day. And, uh, so then that doesn't change our demand at all.
We're allotted so much and that's it.
Yeah, our demand won't change, that, that part.
No, that cost won't...
Unless we wanna raise our demand.
Then, yeah, then...
Yeah.
Then they're gonna get hooked.
And, and you know, uh, Bill Lindley told me you can't even do that if you wanted to.
Cause it's not there.
It's not there.
Yeah. I thought so, because Storm Lake has got shut down, I don't know how many times and stuff, so, that's what I thought.
Well, there wasn't, wasn't there, uh, open, what do they call it?
Yeah.
Open, here was...
They opened, they opened the, the season, they called it open season.
Open season, yeah.
Where we could go to, uh, Northern Natural Gas and say, we want more gas. Well, they wanted six people to come to them and say that, and they only got three. And what they were gonna do is beef up their lines and it was gonna cost one and a half million dollars and they were gonna split that between the six people that they wanted, or whoever, however many they got. Well, they only got three, so they decided not to do it.
Yeah, cause our, what we heard up there, Mark and I, was if you wanted to beef up your line, you want more gas, it was gonna cost you.
Yeah.
Unless you had this open season, then you could split it amongst different ones.
Well, and it would have, you know, you would have had one, one and a half million divided by six, a couple hundred thousand dollars you'd have to pay to get more gas.
Otherwise you had to pay the whole million and a half or...
And then if we didn't use the demand, we're still screwed.
Yeah, yeah, you paid for, yeah, you paid for so much.
If we didn't use the gas.
Well, and I think that's why a lot of people didn't...
You have to charge the transportation charge, huh?
That's why a lot of people didn't speak up, cause they didn't wanna have to get into that one point five million dollars.
Probably into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, wanna have that. No blame.
I don't either.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, building permits, please.
Looks like we've got one actual building permit and one amended building permit. Seems like that's kinda the thing to do now, is amend them.
You amended one, is that Lynn's?
No, that's John Meister. He found a bigger pool online and so he just decided to put a bigger pool in and put a deck around it.
Time to approve the building permits.
I'll say that one.
Been moved and seconded to approve both building, building permits, one by John Meister, the other one by Lynn Cadwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Sack County Economic Tourism and Development Contribution. I didn't know if we had done this in the past, but it sounds to me like we have.
What is it, eight hundred?
It's, uh, the eight hundred and nineteen dollars is what it'd be.
Yeah.
We lost people.
We lost people, yeah.
My part.
I move, uh, move that contribution to SETD.
I'll say it.
Been moved and seconded to accept the, uh, SETD contribution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Wayne Nissen up, website, uh, update.
I was kinda hoping Wayne would be here tonight, but he's not, so I think we're just gonna have to scratch that one.
Gonna have to table that?
I talked to Mel, and she said he's, he wa, he wants to do it, he just has to get figured out how he's gonna get.
And then what the council wants from him to update everything.
Right.
Okay, can you contact him to make sure that he's here at our next meeting?
Yep, I'll do that. Cause we, cause we do, excuse me, Steve, we do have an awful lot of people calling about our website.
Well, yeah, it's not updated, I mean.
Especially this time of year, it seems like, because they wanna know when the farm festival is.
We've got the nineteen ninety-seven.
Can we go on there and update it?
Can we update it?
Was Robin doing it, or, or not Robin, yeah, Robin doing it that one time, or?
Uh, I don't know if Robin was doing it, I can talk to her, I think Michelle was doing some stuff, and, you know, I think that was probably part of the problem.
Something about you had to have us, access to get into that, to update it, to, to do something, and I, I don't remember the whole facts.
Right, a little bit. Didn't Mike Offenshofer set it up, is that correct?
Yeah.
He's shooting them.
Wow. Shoot them, yeah, yeah, shoot them.
Yeah, shoot them and did.
Shoot them is the main guy out of it.
And it seems like it's easy to get around in, it's easy to use, it's just finding the time to get it updated, you know?
I guess my point being is if we can, if we can go in there and do, and get some updates in there now, just to get it updated.
Just to appease.
Because it's gonna take us months for Wayne to get on board and get going.
Right, yeah.
And just get some up-to-date dates and, and information in there.
Well, I'll talk to Robin, and, you know, if, if nothing else.
We can get the, like, farm festival data.
Yeah.
If nothing else, Tony and I'll just have to, you know, carve out some time and.
Cause somebody was, like, say, wanted to know who our councilman in Walleye were, and of course, it's not up to date. Wish I didn't care that you're on my ass.
Okay, let's move forward to summer help applications, which.
It's kinda the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Kirk.
This ended the fifteenth of July, and, and I honestly didn't know what you guys wanted to do, so I put it on here, you guys can look at the resumes. Um, we don't have anybody that's in town, and, uh, I mean, other than Tony. Uh, and honestly, guys, Tony's doing a hell of a good job. Um, I would actually hate to see somebody else come in here that I would have to train, honestly.
Well, I think it'd be more, he's willing to move to town.
I'm almost a hundred percent positive that Jennifer Olson would not move to town, they've spent so much money on that house, that they've gotta, they've gotta live there, they fixed that thing up, it's really nice, and. Um, Valita, I haven't talked to her, um, but she's lived in Storm Lake most of her life, the way it looks to me, so, thinking she's probably there. Now, I can call her and talk to her if you want me to. Um, I personally would like to see you guys give Tony the job.
Discussion?
Got a problem with that?
What, uh, what kind of wages is Tony getting right now?
Nine dollars an hour.
Nine dollars an hour?
That is what we started the shell off at, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I would move, we hired Tony for the clerk's, or what is it, clerk's assistant job.
Mm-hmm.
At the rate of nine dollars an hour, if she'll accept it, or where that goes.
Um, well, I suppose we, we would, she would be full-time, so, uh, she would get the four hundred dollar a month. Um, cafeteria plan, and she would get the, uh.
Iper.
Yeah, she would get ipers, and she would get the.
Wouldn't give her any vacation, though.
Well, and I don't think we need to give her a weight room pass, I mean, look at her, she's. Plenty skinny now, so. I mean, yeah, obviously, she would get that.
Fill up so she's.
Yeah.
Armrested.
No, we don't need that.
Yeah.
You are graduated, Tony, completely.
No, not yet.
How long have you got to go to?
I have two classes to finish.
And how long would that take?
That would take, that's one semester.
One semester, uh, one semester is what, fifteen weeks?
It depends on, on the times of the classes, since I, I need to take them at night, I either could do two at night, if there's not both of them offered, then I'll have to take one this semester and one next semester at night. It's just the availability of the.
Could be out of DMAC, out of Carol.
Yeah.
And Tony and I have talked about that, and she's very adamant about getting her degree, so, I mean, I think that's gonna be done.
Hold, hold on a second.
Okay, before I, before I entertain a motion. Um, I'm gonna ask you real point-blank and upfront, Tony, this isn't a stepping stone, is it, I mean, you kinda wanna stay put here and all Walleye and?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just to, uh, satisfy the, uh, council. All right, been moved and seconded to hire Tony Cappenelli as our assistant clerk at nine dollars an hour wage, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Summer help applications. Um, and I'll just update you guys on this, um, we have hired Whit Ryder. He applied, and he was, he actually worked with Rick last year, so Rick wanted him to come back again, he wouldn't have to train anybody, and, uh, just worked out better.
Do you, so, do, does Rick?
You don't need to act on any of that.
Nope.
No.
That's, uh, information right there, so.
I was gonna say, you don't need any more help, do you, Mark?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, Rick didn't say anything to me, so.
So these are just going file, if, if there is a need for additional help, we will, uh, look at those.
Right.
Kenny Harms' contract?
Uh, you know, we kinda talked about this already, um, I don't think there's anything else there to talk about, unless you guys have some questions on his actual contract.
Is that the same rate it was?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same rate it's been, yeah.
Yeah, it was a five-year contract.
I don't think there's anything to do with it, it's done, is it?
No, uh.
I mean, cause we, it's a five-year contract, we're free to.
And, and the bills to be paid kinda took care of that, I had a couple of questions about it, and, and we answered those in the bills to be paid, so.
Just do what we talked about.
Right.
Looks to me, if you have something to do, it better be big. Two hundred dollars, just, just to.
Just to show up.
Start the truck.
Right.
Just make sure we get a little more documentation.
Right.
Detailed report.
I've got that, I've got that written down, that every time he comes, or every month, I suppose, he'll send us a bill, and then we'll, Rick and I'll sit down and go through it. Right.
Yeah, go get very comprehensive in it, and what have you, and.
Right, okay.
Travis?
Yeah. Before, before we do Travis, I wanna, I wanna go ahead and do the public forum, because Travis is gonna request a, a closed session. We're gonna go into closed session, and then we'll just end with that closed session.
We have to come back.
We have to come back on.
Yeah, you have to come back on.
Yeah, but, but I don't want to have, have the public come back in, say what they're gonna say, and then, then go, so. I have one thing for the public forum, uh, the house on five-ten Center Street is, uh. Oh, I don't know, I can't even tell ya, it's right north of, um.
Gloria Evans.
Lindsay King.
Yeah.
Uh, that was recently sold online to a kid from Afghanistan, he was gonna come in and fix it up, and he got here and turned the water on, and the water pipes busted, so he kinda wants to get out of it.
Tear it down.
What? And, and what I did today was I asked him if he would be interested in, interested in just selling it before he puts any more money in it, and then we buy it and tear it down, just.
Not we.
No, not we.
Just, no.
No, no.
Okay, then.
What's, what's he asking?
Forget that, six grand.
Ooh, with broken pipes? You've got to be kidding me.
Don't shoot the messenger, just bringing it up.
So imagine needs to happen.
Well, yeah, I mean, he, he told me that, he told me that he's gonna try to, you know, come back on the weekends and get it looking respectable, but.
I don't care what he does, it's not for six grand.
Worse than the one down here.
No, you're right.
Yeah, there's, there's two or three.
It's inedible, you know, I don't care what he's.
That thing, that thing down there, yeah.
It's a house, it's not inedible, just, I don't know why you let people ask.
I don't even want the animals staying there anymore.
Yeah, nice, big, long ones, bigger than cats.
In the bad parts, even, you know, go through the legal parts, try to condemn it, it's gonna cost us, not my leg, in a two-year process, probably, and.
If not longer, if not longer, more headaches in the end, you're right, Franny.
But.
Okay, so that, I'll call him back and say that we're not interested in that.
Not this time.
What about Lindsay and Jeff, are they interested?
Well, I know they always have been, uh, I've been told that they wanna steal it.
I'm sure.
Which, I mean.
Where did the, where did the water lines, where did the mains break?
He told, he told me that they all broke, I don't know what that means.
Only one main going in the house.
He didn't say the main.
The main didn't.
He didn't say the main, he said all the water, all the water lines broke.
Last winter.
Probably froze, it was talking to.
The main was shut off, evidently, it would be full of water, is there any way to go up and view that?
Oh, I don't think he'd care if we went up and looked at it.
Why do we wanna go up and look at it?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the city, I'm talking personally myself.
Okay.
I'm talking me.
Slow mo.
You'll pay for that, buddy, you'll pay for that.
Let Lindsay and.
Oh, they, yeah, they, yeah, that's fine, I have no problem with it. Yeah, I have no problem.
Cleo, that one town was interested in it.
Yeah.
I think they're together there.
Yeah, I will get those guys in touch, cause I have his number and I have their number, so I'll go.
I think they'll, they may work something out, between Cleo and Lindsay, them, they may work together on it.
Be the best way to go for us.
We don't wanna.
Get rid of it.
No.
No, city doesn't.
I have one thing for public forum, too, though.
You're not holding a great place again.
The alley on the south side of Luther Church, is that city property?
Alley on the what?
South side.
South side of Luther Church.
South side?
That's our driveway, but then the alley.
Yeah.
Is that an alley, too, that goes on the south side of?
Is that really an alley, though, or do they run?
I don't know.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think there's no alleys going east and west in town, I would think that.
There should, there should be something with lotlines there or something.
Yeah, we'd have to check on the lotline, does it need to be fixed, Rob, or?
Well, we're just gonna start working on that stuff now.
After their addition, you know, they kinda pumped it out of it.
Yeah.
Their brother's street is broken up pretty bad.
Yeah.
Who broke?
Heavy equipment.
City flowers. It mustn't be ours, huh?
I'll, I'll check on that, though, for you, Rob.
Throw it in. Oh, we got the concrete running down, let's.
Any other public forum, Tony? Mark?
Well, oh, I got one thing, um, Chapman metering showed up today, I'm talking to the press meters.
Okay.
So we're working on them, um, what else does that hang up?
There's a number written on my meter out back, it says twenty-eight dash something, does that mean anything, or is that just?
That's the meter number, and that's what, when they replace.
It's a meter number.
That's the meter number, but.
Customer number, actually.
Customer number that we.
Oh, I was gonna say, if that's the year that they put it in, Christopher Columbus was here when that was installed.
Yeah, that.
That question will go up.
I think that's all I got.
Yeah, get your meter replaced first.
Yeah, I'll bet you how that is.
Well, that was one of the first ones we wanna get down.
Wait till I figure out how to re-rig that, maybe. Anything else in the public forum? If not, Mr. Kenobi, and you'll have to request it.
I'd like to request that we go into closed session.
I will have to, uh, call a roll ball, roll call vote.
Before you do that, let me just say that we're gonna go into closed session due to a, um, pending litigation that is imminent. It's, uh, twenty-one point five C, that's the reason we're gonna go into, uh, closed session.
Questions? Yes, sir.
We gotta do a separate recording of this, uh.
Yeah, I'm gonna shut her off, turn her back on, Curtis, so.
And then will you guys call the public back in to, uh, hold the vote, to go into closed session, and adjourn?
Sure.
Sure.
So we need a roll call vote from you four to go into closed session.
Rob?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yeah.
Franny?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
John Abson. I would ask the, uh, everyone to leave, please, except for Travis. Moved, moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, as, uh, Rob moved, Franny seconded, Daryl third. Daryl's mad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.